Whenever I can.
Michael, what's the killer's area?
Don't say anything, two hour agents.
How is it, you know, like a big twisted liner? And it goes into the ground. Dig it up, see what the, maybe there's a car. What money is it?
I hope so.
I hope so.
This is advertising paying $750 for junk cars right now.
I got two in the property. I've got 1922 Fords all shut up with somebody cheap and shit up over the years. Pieces of it, then his old tractor way in the back stuck in the mud. It's all rotting away. Not my stuff, they must have spent years and years of money. Never shoot, never hold. Well, this one's full of bullet holes.
I've seen plenty of them full of bullet holes.
I get through two of the three packets.
You're doing good.
Yes, that was a Superman vest due to the bank switch over.
It's six o'clock, our call to the meeting to order. First sort of business is public comment. If you have something you'd like to say, come to the podium. Keep your comments to three minutes, address them to the board and not to audience. Anybody? Nope. Next, Deb Sugarman, are you here for Deb?
I'm here for Deb.
Trails Committee.
Morning for Deb Sugarman. So we're getting ready to start our work for the trails, for the Conservation Commission for the summer. And we're here to ask for approval for replacement of a couple of bridges or placement of bridges, a punction and two kiosks. We'll be working in the Durgin Preserve, James Farm, the Gary Reserve areas. The bridge in the James Farm was originally put in in 1985 by an Eagle Scout project. And it's got a broken beam on it and its construction is such that we're going to just take it out and put in a bridge that meets U.S. forestry standards. We'll also be doing some clearing, some brush and that sort of stuff from the trails. The trails have been presented by Deb at an earlier time for this. There's a bridge in Punction we're going to put in the Durgin Preserve that's going to combine a trail that'll go from where the parking lot is back into around the Willwright Trail in the Lee Town Forest. And there's a small spring with runoff for the spring that we're going to put a small eight-foot bridge across that and a little eight-foot walkway punction over a wet area. And then we have a couple of kiosks, one going in at James Farm. We're going to take the little signs that the Boy Scouts put in as part of a Explorer Eagle project and mount that on the back of the kiosk and then we'll have our regular trail kiosk on the front of it. And then Garydy Reserve off Garydy Road, the trail there is going to cut back into Ma-Jones Forest. We're going to put a kiosk across from the cemetery where that trail entrance will be. We talked to Steve already about his parking in the area where the cemetery is there. Most of that's going to be probably just the neighborhood people, Captain Parker and people on Garydy Road that are using that area as walking areas. We're going to try to direct it into a better direction and get a kiosk up there so people can see just where to go and how to handle the trails. So we're just asking approval to go ahead and do that work for the summer.
Can you, in terms of the motion that is written in front of me, it says the two kiosks in Garydy Reserve and James Farm, but it doesn't say where the two bridges are. You mentioned the two places. Can you tell me what those are again?
One bridge is James Farm.
Yep.
And the other one is Durgin Preserve, Lee Town Forest area.
Any questions?
Just curiosity, which are you giving the wood for?
We are budgeted through the Conservation Commission for the wood for, so we're using pressure-treated lumber so it'll last. The bridges that had been built prior in the town forest were hemlock and of course they only lasted about 10, 15 years. So we just went through and replaced seven bridges in the town forest, eight bridges in the town forest. And everything we've been doing is with pressure-treated now and bank to bank so nothing's in the water. And that way it'll last a lot longer than I care to know.
Most of that, at least in the past, has come through Regi lumber under the town contract.
Correct.
Is that the best price for it?
Do they have the state contract also for lumber?
Any other questions? No? So I move to grant the Lead Trails Committee permission to install two bridges, one in James Farm and one in Durgin Reserve, and two kiosks in Garydy Reserve and James Farm. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Get out there and enjoy the trails.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Chief Demmett?
Good evening. So the first request that I'm asking the board is to increase the fire department's special duty rate from $50 an hour to $17.33. That includes the administration fee to cover Medicare, Social Security, retirement, if applicable, in the amount of the $20.33. And we have not increased this in over eight years.
Is this particular thing the same as the towns' similar amounts?
I've actually heard that we're on the lower end.
Still we're on the lower end, you're still on the lower end is what I can tell.
I was just talking to one of the members and he worked a detail for the Seacoast Department that said they were making over a hundred. But I don't want to jump it too much.
Yeah, maybe you should go up a little bit more, maybe?
Maybe you should, let me ask you another question.
Go ahead.
Special duty, the police run, how much do they charge?
It's a split rate and I believe it is higher than the $70 fee.
That's what I'm wondering, I mean if we at least go to the level of what the police are charging, I think you should add more, I mean.
I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, I just want...
I just also don't want to jack the price up and then go to the, where we have our details because we're unlike the police department that do it all the time and it's, you know, bigger entities. We have local businesses that we work with, that's really our detail. Plus, I also don't want to put us too high where we're not getting details out of town because we've repriced ourselves, so.
I understand the situation.
I'd be, I think myself and the other members would be happy if we did like 16, but I just don't want to jump it too much right now.
So increase it by $10, basically?
So right now at the 70, we'd be increasing at $20, so it would be $30.33 would be the difference between what we are right now.
Oh, but I mean, right now you're proposing $70.33.
Yeah.
We're talking about doing $10, so that would be $80.33. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, that's same amount, just different ways.
It all comes down to math.
Yeah, it all comes down to.
Are you guys both okay with going to 80.33?
Sure.
So I move to grant the Fire Chief permission to increase the town of Lee's fire special duty pay rate to $80.33, which includes administrative fee, administrative fee of $20.33 effective immediately. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing the short one first.
Yeah. So the next one, Engine Two. We had to bring Engine Two in for some brake work. We've seen two repair shops doing the, getting the work done. And when it was in there, they finally noticed that the frame's cracked. So a rapple of the pump panel on the officer side to the passenger side of the vehicle, they found a crack in the frame. We spoke with them about how we can move forward. They said to reach out to a couple of companies. We reached out to the manufacturer, the dealer. We checked the warranty. I'm no lawyer, but I'm being told by the dealer and the manufacturer that the warranty does not cover it because it's caused by rust. The packet, I did have pictures in there. So what it is, is the frame's like a C-channel and there's two, it's doubled up. So they powder coat both of the frames and then they put them together. So now the frame at the bottom is starting to bow down and you can just sit there and pull all the rust out in between the two pieces. So it's almost like a stretch, you know, where the frame keeps moving back and forth, it's opening up, so it's cracked it right down the frame. The repair shop that we talked to does not want to touch it, they don't want to weld it, it's illegal because of where it is, it's a commercial vehicle. Speaking with the dealer, a rough estimate would be $150,000 to $250,000 if we replace just the frame. His concern is that there's a lot of rust under there, that he'd find other issues with the truck, so it would be more than that at the end. The other issue that I have is that the F, the financial planning tool, we're looking to replace Engine Two and the Rescue and combine it into one vehicle in '27. The downside, I think, you have all seen the articles that are out there, New York Post did a really good article about the fire apparatus and the cost of it and why it's going up and the delays and all of the buildings of the truck. And so that's kind of taken all into account, I wanted to come to the board and see what you guys would like and how we should handle it moving forward. Right now we're down an engine, which isn't a great thing because our Engine One has gone down, I think two weeks ago we had to work on it, so we were, we had the tanker and that was a, so I'd like to do something sooner rather than later. The different avenues we looked at is we do have the money in the capital improvements plan, but speaking with Andy, we'd have to do a special meeting, which because it's an emergency, he thinks that we could do that, or do we wait until March? We've, I met with Katrin on Friday to talk to her about the Granite State Clean Fleet grant. We could get possibly up to $500,000 through that. And the other thing I'm looking at is purchasing a demo truck, which would be cheaper as well. And that way, it's already built. They're looking two to four years right now to build a fire truck. And so if we're looking at waiting and replacing it in 2027, then we're two years about an engine and then it could be another two to four years just to build it. And then the cost is going to get more as well. I'm assuming the numbers that we have and we've been talking about the last couple of months are going to go up again, so that's kind of where we're at.
So these demo trucks you're talking about, they're available now?
Engine Two actually was a demo truck. Joe Lombardo purchased that in 2015. So what I'm understanding from the dealers is that all of the dealers get a demo truck every, so like six months or a year, they get one demo so they can take it to these trade shows, they can bring it to fire departments and they can show it and they'll actually sell that truck. So that truck has, potentially, it's already built and they're showing it off right now or it's in line to be built and because it's their truck, they get it through faster. A lot of it will travel to like Indianapolis, they just had FDIC, they'll show it there, they might show it at the New England Chief Show. So although it's built, it might have to go around to these shows and be used by the dealer and then we can purchase it after.
But it's not configured the way we have?
We don't get to pick the engine, you know, the axles, the weight, we don't get to pick any of that, pump size. So we look around to see what we could find out there that is going to fit our needs.
And how much is the little truck?
We saw one in the paper for $600,000. I think there's another one that we found that was $800,000, so it kind of depends. And this is all a timeline thing too. Speaking with Katrin, we can put in for the grant. We have until May 23rd, next week, I'm sitting in a webinar for that. So we can get the grant, but that grant does last until '27, so we don't have to spend the money right away. But the concern would be, do we do a special meeting, which I know is going to cost the town money as well, or do we wait until March when we just have a normal meeting, we can vote on it then?
Because there is no agents to expend.
There's no agents to expend.
So you'd have to have a means to get the money out.
Yep. And just, I would mention while he's here, the Fire Chief has been extremely patient with me. I've been sending him snippets of Spartan warranties and various other things I've found about warranties and that sort of thing. And he has done his due diligence and put up with my bothersomeness for several weeks now.
Questions for the other members or do you have any questions?
I guess I want to go back to what you said earlier, that you were going to combine two, talk to me again about that again.
So we're building these, the apparatus for hopefully to last 20 years. The department changes within those 20 years as we grow. So right now our staffing levels, I look at it as, if we can combine, combine the two trucks, we don't really have the staffing level we used two years ago, there's not 40 call members coming in and 15 people for each call. And then also it's going to cut down on our maintenance costs, we don't have to buy the set of tires, we don't have to get a state inspection, we're not paying for the fuel on that one, we can just combine one truck. So that's kind of how I was looking at it, was saving money in the long term.
This demo truck would not have that, or would?
What do you mean?
When you're talking about two different, are you talking about merging two?
Yep. So we'd get rid of the Rescue with an Engine Two.
I got you.
And we'd buy one truck to replace both of those vehicles.
Would the demo be able to do the one truck?
Yep.
Oh, that's, I want to make sure right this point, be going in that direction.
Yeah, they make rescue pumpers now, so it has a pump on it, it can hold water and then it has enough compartment space that we can put all our tools in it.
So there's a money savings in the long run at that point. I think repairing a frame is ridiculous, so I don't want to go there.
Well, it sounds like, well, at least in my opinion, waiting for a new truck and then waiting till 2029 is not acceptable either.
And I totally agree, so I'm willing to look at the demo situation.
So how about if we have, or ask the chief to find a demo that meets his needs or as many needs as he can find and task the town administrator to go into the process of doing a special town duty to get those funds out of that particular capital reserve fund.
And while you're here, what happens to the old one?
So it all depends, if we do the grant, then we have to scrap the truck. That's per the grant because it's for the clean emissions.
Yes.
Speaking with Katrin, it sounds like we'd be better off, because I was thinking about we have a better chance with the grant if we're saying that we're replacing two trucks versus one. She thinks it might be a better idea if we just try and replace Engine Two with the grant and then we can sell the Rescue, potentially. The other side note to that is Joe Lombardo got that truck on a grant through FEMA, so we have to check with FEMA to see what we can and can't do with that as well. So FEMA might be like, no, you can't sell it because then potentially the town's making money off that grant, or maybe I can't put it within that other grant, so it's two trucks versus the one.
The stuff that's on Engine Two, when you scrap it, as far as I understand from the Highway Department, they like do stuff to the engine and then they take it away.
Yep.
Can some of the stuff on that truck be taken off and used?
Absolutely.
Otherwise?
Yep. All the hoes, all the equipment on it, it's just the truck itself and the engine.
It's primarily the engine block you have that are useless.
So I think, if you're okay with that, I think that's what we'd like to do. Are you both in agreement? Okay.
Yes. And I apologize for not coming to you guys sooner, I just wanted to make sure that I had it in every avenue and looked at and discussed.
So to be clear, go and find us a demo truck that meets as many of your needs as you have. Right now your cost limit, I believe, is $913,000, so nothing about that.
So the, I was just talking to John, the amount in the account will be 915, but we still have the radio infrastructure they're going to approve last year that we're still working on, which would be $80,000, so I'm going to work with John with the numbers.
That's your limit, so don't come back to us with a $2 million truck that's got gold features and, I know you wouldn't. So see what you can do and keep Andy informed in terms of, because we have to announce it, what is it, 30 days?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact guidelines, but you know, Superior Court Judge.
Yep. Did you have the Superior Court do a motion or something to?
It's been a while since I did it.
Well, we'll give you some experience.
Seventeen or eighteen years?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, regular business, Andy?
Yeah, the first item I had is the Eagle Scout proclamation for Gibson, who is here with us this evening, and I've got a copy for the board to sign for him as well. But if the chairman could proclaim his proclamation?
Chairperson, I'm a chairperson. Yes, Katrin's probably watching and rolling over there.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, proclamation, whereas, Scouting America New Hampshire, for the Boy Scouts of America, Daniel Webster Council, as long been respected as an organization that helps mold young people into responsible conscientious adults, and, whereas, the rank of Eagle Scout is considered to be the pinnacle of achievement within the organization, with the first class of Eagles being recognized in 1912. And whereas, in order to retain the rank of Eagle Scout, a scout must be actively involved in the troop's leadership, demonstrate that he or she lives by the principles of trust, loyalty, duty, obedience, helpfulness, and morality, as stated in the Scout oath and Scout law, earning these 21 merit badges, plan, develop, and lead others in completing a service project, and successfully complete a review by an Eagle Scout board. And whereas, Gibson Griffith is a member of Scouting America New Hampshire, Troop 459, and whereas, for a services project, Gibson designed and built a raised bed garden for the Wilkinson Food Pantry. This includes four raised beds for large produce, two sorting tables with screens, wash buckets for sorting vegetables, teepee bean garden, ooh, that sounds good, rehabilitation of two herb beds, herb beds, and repurposing a garden cart for the pantry of volunteers to transport produce, transport the produce to the food pantry. This project was constructed using material that Gibson got donations for from local businesses and clubs in the Seacoast area. He managed over 40 volunteers to make this project happen. The anniversary of the pantry, excuse me, serves families in the Oyster Ridge District and beyond. The project was done in partnership with fellow troop member and Eagle Scout candidate, Brody Lavecchio. Now, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Chairman of the Lead Select Board, I do hereby deem an honor and privilege to extend to Gibson Griffith our sincere congratulations for his outstanding Eagle Scout project and the award. In witness ceremony, I and other members of the Select Board have set our hands and cause the seal of the Town of Lee to be affixed to this proclamation. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice job. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Gibson.
Stand there, take a picture.
Am I getting enough photos?
We're getting enough photos. Andy, look up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
You don't have to leave, you can stay for the whole meeting.
The next item I had was a solid waste agreement with Matt Berry. We had had very little communication from Matt Berry regarding joint work on municipal projects. Probably six to eight months ago was the last time we had talked about possibly trash hauling for them. We began trash hauling this past week on sort of a test basis and my initial instinct was that we should have some sort of agreement. I called Primex and talked with their legal team and they said you absolutely want some sort of agreement, holding the town out as a contractor, you know, in case somebody puts something in the canister that you're hauling that the transfer station doesn't want, that type of thing, you might protect yourself. So I put together, and this is a fairly standard contract with a solid waste portion for regular household garbage taken out of it, that I put together initially as a draft, I have a non-draft copy as well. The sooner we get this site, the better as we are actively hauling trash. The GPW Director's recommendation was that we charge $200,000 a haul, he would anticipate one to two hauls per week. This would be exclusively bulky waste and construction and demolition waste, which would be hauling to Rochester and feels the $200 more than adequately covers the use of the truck and the employee needed to drive it. The other good thing with regard to this is their site is seasonal, they don't have a transfer station, they have an area where there's a container that people can put the bulky waste in. I believe they are closed from November through the end of March, so this is essentially an April through October arrangement.
So do those go to Erko and Epping or where are they going? Where are the trips?
I believe the bulky waste itself is going to Rochester, the construction and demolition may well be going to Erko and Epping, that's where we take our construction.
So a little bit, a little bit south.
Yeah. Not a great distance either way, but it, you know, would probably tie up the driver for, you know, a morning at least.
Who do we have that has CDL driver?
Ben Lyons is our primary driver of the roll-off truck.
But all of them have a CDL.
Pretty much everybody is qualified, Ben is.
Chip has it too, right?
Yep.
Okay, so they've got it.
Good. I just want to make sure that club drivers do.
There's four of them, there are four?
There is at least four that have CDLs and Ben is the primary designated for the roll-off truck.
Sounds good.
I don't know what the board's pleasure is, I did not put a motion in the meeting packet because it was initially presented as a draft.
Are you two okay with it or? I'm okay with it.
I read through it in detail.
Could you fill in the appropriate places in terms of dates and stuff on your copy so we can sign it? Because that's the non-draft one, right?
I'll just use, I guess today's date?
Sure.
And if Matt Berry has an issue with it, we'll just have to come back. That's because you're working too much over there, take a rest.
But you got to keep it up now, every weekend.
And they are also a Primex insured community, so Primex is comfortable with that. Well, the Fire Chief, while you're signing it, the Fire Chief did not mention this evening, but there's an upcoming meeting with Barrington, Fire Chief and the Barrington Town Administrator to discuss regionalization and the fire service, to keep the board updated on what comes out of that.
So since we've all three signed it, do you need a motion?
Probably not. No, as long as you both sign it. Formally agreed that you were good with it.
Anything else, Mr. Dean?
Yeah, a couple of things. There were two dates proposed by the library for a potential site visit and walk regarding their ramping entryway, I didn't know if either of those dates were agreeable to the board. Yeah, the two dates that they had looked at were April 17th or the 22nd at 5:00 or 5:30.
17th they can't do, 22nd they can.
17th they have a site in Moncaroo, so that's all.
Are you agreeable if I tell them the 22nd?
I'm okay with the 22nd, but you two okay or?
That's another Thursday, is it?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's my birthday.
Congratulations, happy birthday.
It's also birthday.
Can we sing a happy birthday song?
What time, 5:00, 5:30?
5:00 is fine, I don't know.
Okay.
You two okay with 5?
Yeah, 5:00 PM.
Since it's your birthday, Andy, can you come anyways or?
Yeah, I can, I'll bring a cake.
Oh, you bring a cake, wow.
Hey, Andy, you're better.
Thank you. Since we're all getting together, is that technically a meeting?
We do need to post it, yeah.
So please, okay, thanks.
And just, nothing particular yet, but... Um, and just nothing particular yet, but, um, Mark Nelson of the Library Trustees and I have been working on a solar RFP for the Library project. Um, Mark, uh, sent me back his version, which I sent to Katrin, who is looking over as a clean energy, uh, New Hampshire person in the middle, and I think the three of us are pretty much all set to go ahead and post that and see what we get for bids, um, going forward on that project. Um, the one other thing I wanted to mention is the town office door. Um, I was hoping Steve was gonna be here tonight. His person has not gotten back to him about fixing the town office door. Uh, the contractor that I contracted, contacted multiple times now, has not gotten back to me about fixing the door. I had spoken with Mr. Bugbee last week, who mentioned that, um...
Don't tell him the name. Don't tell him the name because they'll say no.
They'd used a, uh, door contractor for a joint municipal project in Summersworth that had been responsive, and, um, as of right now, the, the town office front door has not been closing correctly since the second week of February, and, um, I, I'll, I'll talk with Steve, but, uh, I think it is time for me to find the door contractor and make sure it gets fixed if we can't work it out internally or...
They've done work in different other municipalities, too. Auburn was one. I got their name from Neil Urbine, who's the Town Administrator in Northwood. He said they're very responsive. The only problem I have with them, which I've shared this with Andy already, is that they come, they do the work, and then it's hard to get a bill out of them. So I had to chase them to get a bill out of them so we could pay them. So other than that, they're perfectly fine, so, um...
Well, I am likely to give them a call and see if I can get an estimate.
I gave you their contact, right?
You did.
Okay, thanks. Yep.
Um, and the other portion of that is the, uh, the town clerk's door has, uh, the corners are rusted out enough so that rodents, uh, can get in the building, and, uh, both the new clerk and the outgoing town clerk both think it's a good idea to have a window on that door so people don't open the steel door directly into.
Yep. Well, either get them for the front door, get them for the side, too.
Yep.
So that would be great.
Absolutely. And, uh, that was all I had this evening. Questions to me?
The tree that we talked about last time I came down?
That did, I believe they also, they took down the tree in front of the library. They also took down at least one tree in the backside of the cemetery.
Oh, and in?
That same morning, I think. They, they got things done pretty quickly, and they moved them across the street and said, "There's a couple more."
Okay, all right. All right, so. And that charge was?
I have not seen the bill yet for that.
All right. Is there a charge to the town and also to the cemetery, or what's the?
I don't know the breakdown. I, we kind of didn't get the, uh, billing statement or explanation yet, so...
Okay. And we're all set also with the, all the accounts, the financial accounts are all where they're supposed to be in TD?
Yes. Everything has now moved to TD. We have, uh, trace amounts still in MNT, so we can keep accounts open for, uh, the random few checks that we need to clear, but, uh, all the commission and committee accounts have been separated and moved. Load account has been separated and moved. The general fund, as I said, there's a little bit at MNT. We're in the process of moving the town credit card account, too.
Okay.
Which, for whatever reason, uh, that has been, uh, a huge bugaboo with MNT and the municipal credit card accounts, for whatever reason. Uh, you know, it's a card with a fifty-five or sixty thousand dollar limit, and we keep between three and five million dollars in the bank, and you would think that I was asking for fifteen million. We're in the process.
Um, do we need to sign signature cards?
I do not have the signature cards back yet from Keith. I hope to get them this week.
All right. Just let us know when we can come in.
Yep. Um, and Ben will be, uh, coming forward, too. We have, um, an in-town active and enthusiastic, uh, vice treasurer, who's, uh, very interested in getting on board, and he had been there for an hour or so on Friday, and...
Excellent.
Yeah, it'll be a good thing, because, uh, we've had one in, uh, Naveley for two or three years, and I didn't realize that he had moved to Dover and can no longer serve as our assistant treasurer, so, um, uh, he will, uh, be taken off the books and, uh, the new gentleman, um, coming on.
Okay. And we had our audit in the town clerk, the county clerk's office?
Not yet. What we are trying to, uh, Linda has asked if we could try to do one audit at year's end, because she's going to be the deputy until at least June thirtieth, um, as well, so we haven't got the final answer on that, but that's her hope, um, that we can do one June thirtieth, wind down and not have to do one now and one then. Can't guarantee that. That's what we're angling for.
Anything else for Andy?
Uh, not that I have, no.
Gentlemen, all right. Anything with consent agenda? Anybody you want, anything pulled, or are you all good with it? I assume you're all good with it.
I'm good.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented to our second.
Sorry.
Any discussion? No? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Have a bunch of... Pardon? Do you want to divide the mob, or do you?
The, um, good, all in one place. Do we get a credit back on registrations if we don't stop using the vehicle? I'm asking a question.
You weren't just a kid.
These manifests include all the stipends that we steal old people?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Ooh, I wanna be the mayor.
Mayor!
Yeah, I, um, I think she's running those stipends under this coming payroll. It got bumped back because of the banking swap.
So my, my children will go without food for another week? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I can cut you a special check if...
No, that's okay.
We have enough left in the MNT account. And we have completed, uh, particularly trying New Hampshire Retirement System audit as of Friday, which is a little more difficult than usual because they have a new system, and as the auditor explained to Taylor and Denise and I, it's as much of a looking curve for her as it is for us.
Wasn't made. What a stack.
That shouldn't happen again.
You never can tell.
And actually, um, with the finalization of the TD bank accounts, we are able to go back to ACH-ing some direct payments, in particular the school. Because we had some check theft problems and a check fraud incident, um, I've been driving checks like the school check over to Durham, um, and you can get back to electronic transfer on a much larger, uh, number of accounts than we had available at our MNT.
Anything besides N for non-public?
No.
Okay, I move to enter the non-public session, New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman number two, section A. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Roll call votes. Oh, excuse me, Andy. Discussion? No, no. David Benson.
Yeah.
John Latoris.
Yes.
Scott Bugbee, yes. Motion passes.
I have a D update, too.
You got what?
A D update, too.
Ooh, that's a...
Yeah.
That's not an A.
No, it's not. That's fire.
So... Okay, so I also moved into non-public session, New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman number two, section C as well. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Ooh. David Benson. Yes? John Latoris.
Yes.
Scott Bugbee, yes. Motion passes. I think this was with the... Did we catch it?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Do you wanna start with the D, or? Is that quick? I think it's really quick, isn't it? Okay. The D.
I used to hold it here.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that's ever happened before. But yeah, yeah.
I gave, they gave me an estimate of six hundred and some odd dollars for four years, and then another four didn't come simply on it. I got, the other day, I got it back twice, because stuff didn't come like it was supposed to.
Oh, yeah.
It came.
I'll be there.
It was today, but that wasn't the worst of it. They gave me an estimate of about six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
The bill was almost nine hundred.
Yikes.
Yeah. When you walk up to that, that camera.